Our call to order, Mayor of the City Commission, please join me in the West Wing.
.........................................................................................................
Welcome, everyone. Get our roll call, please.
Sarda.
Here.
Ferdy.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Canagh.
Here.
Mybal.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Mosher.
Here.
Mayor Hoffman.
Here.
City Manager Nelson.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
You have before in your packet the minutes from May 8th meeting. What is your pleasure?
I will move the minutes.
Second. Motion is seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Anybody from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Our proclamation for mental wellness. Somebody want to all come forward, or some of you? Hey, thanks for coming. Whereas June 7th and 8th, 2017, are the dates when Yankton Area Mental Wellness Incorporated will host the 19th Annual Yankton Regional Mental Wellness Conference at Mount Marty College in Yankton, South Dakota. And whereas the overall mission is caring for self, caring for community, and the 2017 conference theme is planting seeds of hope, reflecting the need for holistic care which can be attained through collaboration between community services, educational systems, and mental health treatment. And whereas the community, the commitment to training and networking is evident in Yankton, a community that is extremely concerned about serving those in need, strive to educate students for future employment in healthcare and mental health, and represents a region rich in resources and professional expertise to educate others. And whereas the Yankton Area Mental Wellness Incorporated and professionals from Yankton, from South Dakota, from the Midwest and beyond, have joined forces to present a variety of sessions to educate conference participants with current information, available resources, a network of support, regional expertise, and a professional credit. Now therefore, I, Jake Hoffman, Mayor of Yankton, do hereby proclaim June 7th and 8th, 2017, as Yankton Area Mental Wellness Conference Days in Yankton, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to join me in supporting mental wellness awareness.
Thank you for the recognition. And Pam's handing out, there is a... I'm Tom Stanage, and I'm the Chairperson of Yankton Area Mental Wellness. Pam did just pass out for everybody, a flyer on a presentation that will be open to the community, June, is it June 7th, Pam, at 5:15? And it's "Planting Seeds of Hope," Jim Warren. It's going to be a really good presentation that really focuses on building partnerships and hope among Native Americans in rural communities. So he'll focus on diversity, and it's open to the community, so we hope people come to that. But thank you for the recognition.
Hey, thank you. Now we'll have the City Managers' report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and public. I have a number of things to visit with you all tonight, so appreciate your patience here. In association with our transportation activities grant, our trail grant that we're working on, West City Limits Road, as well as Walmart to the east, our engineers have indicated that there is a wetland determination that needs to be done that's going to increase the cost of the project of about $4,000, and that's an expense to us. They need you all to know that, and that needs to be recognized in our minutes and acknowledged in our minutes that there will be an increased expense that could lead to a full environmental analysis, but at this time, it's just a wetland determination. So that's just FYI for you all. Also, not included in your packet because I failed to remind the mayor about the United Way Board of Directors appointment due to our agreement with United Way and our outside agency funding that they're helping us out with. The City Commission will also have a member of your board on the United Way Board of Directors, and Mayor Hoffman has indicated that he would like to serve on that, and so that is also incorporated, will be incorporated verbally on your appointments this evening. Couple of other items. As you know, our engineering and water and wastewater departments are working on design of 8th Street from Lynn to Summit. And we've discussed as a staff with that project, is there any possible way that electrical could be buried as part of that project to clean up how that looks in the neighborhood? I spoke with Northwestern, I spoke with Bradwyn Andy, and I said, "How does that process start?" And he said, "Well, we first need to look into what it would cost, and in order to look into what it would cost, I would need a letter from, you know, you or from the mayor indicating that you would like to investigate that." That would probably likely be at our expense, but I think it's a worthwhile investigation since it's quite a big project, and that's something that we've heard from the neighborhood as something that they're interested in. So with your direction, I would like to ask Northwestern to go ahead and start investigating that for us.
Just for some context, hasn't that issue held up, that project, in the past?
I don't, I think that issue has held up, that it has held it up in the past, or it's at least been one of the points of contention about how that project should look. It would create a really stark visible difference to have that buried, and so I just, we're only going to do this project once, I think, or at least once in our lifetimes, I hope. So I want to look at every possible angle, make sure we're designing it correctly, and maybe it's something we won't want to expend funds on, but I think it's worth the investigation.
And it would be our expense to do the study, or our expense to do all of the work?
Northwestern, Brad indicated that Northwestern will look into the costs associated with, so they'll do that kind of engineering and provide us with, you know, the estimate on what that would be. And so I understood that it was all of our cost to implement if we should decide to do so. Okay, thank you for that. Also, I wanted to visit with you a little bit about some ongoing conversations we're having with Science South Dakota. Last week, I was fortunate enough, along with Commissioner Mosher, to be involved in a discussion and conversation regarding how we can better work together collaboratively as agencies and organizations and governmental entities in our community, and then what really prohibits us from doing so. And we've already come up with some findings, some of them being the need to establish a community plan and vision that transcends individual organizations, but is more encompassing of the community, a need to support one another and celebrate our successes, to have a single message, as well as to engage other folks that may not commonly be engaged in our processes and in our planning and our programming. We had a great discussion, I think, but we just scratched the surface of a discussion that needs to continue. And so we were asked to go back to our boards and ask if we should be continuing exploring this topic and involving ourselves in these efforts. We have another date set for June 28th. I think it was very valuable, but I want to make sure that's something that you all would like to move forward with as well. I don't know, Commissioner Mosher, if you have anything else you'd like to add, but... Okay, I'm seeing heads go up and down, so we'll continue with that. On June 6th and 7th, the Dive in Yankton Committee is going to be working with Stockwell Engineers on a number of focus groups relating to the aquatics facility at Memorial Park. There are a number of stakeholder groups, and Todd Larson will be inviting each of you to one of those stakeholder groups, so we can avoid a quorum, if you'd like to attend that. And then there'll be a community meeting on June 7th, so if you're not, well, I think it's not going to start probably until 7:00, so you can still go to the Planting Seeds of Hope talk, and then there will be a community meeting, we'll get you the exact time and place, I think it's going to be at the middle school, so that'll be time for public input. So I'm both alerting you of that now, although we're giving you a reminder, and also informing the press of a potential quorum of commissioners there, although no action will be taken, and this will be a time for public input, not commission discussion on the topic. Also, I don't believe we alerted the media of a potential quorum at the State of the Community address tomorrow. That's a chamber event happening at Minerva's. I'll be speaking at that, as well as Don Kettering from the County Commission. I don't know who's all attending, but just so the press knows that we may have more than a handful of folks there. I think, oh, one more item, and then I'll be quiet. We, you will be approving tonight an appointment of Mayor Hoffman's Outside Agency Committee. You'll remember in the past, that's the committee that met and talked about all of our outside agency contributions, both from the general fund and from the BBB fund. We were directed from the Commission that you all wanted to work on more of a long-term BBB plan, and so we've incorporated that into our June 19th meeting. Seven of our outside agencies are being now managed via United Way, and so the remaining handful, there's probably five or six, would be the only other ones to talk about. So we're looking for your direction on whether or not you want that outside agency meeting, that group to meet, if you want to wait and see how our discussion on June 19th goes, that's which is our budget, excuse me, our budget meeting, or how you'd like to handle that entity.
Any comments?
Well, I guess, you know, you'd want them to meet if you thought that's something they need to bring to the budget meeting, but what do we want to do with those? And I guess I think we probably would need to hear as a group where we stand, what's left, and get some input from the Commission, because I don't think there'd be any harm in, if they needed to meet after the budget meeting, because we're not going to approve a budget. But right now, I'd be, I'm not sure what we're given that committee, and so I'd like to know, you know, what we're left with here.
I think that's a good suggestion, that if the discussion necessitates it after June 19th, that group can get together. I believe that is Minor, Sarda, and Mybal. So then after that point, there's still plenty of time in the summer to have that group talk if the discussion requires it following our budget meeting on the 19th. So if everyone's happy with that, that's the way we'll take it. Okay, thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or let you get on with your business.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on. This time, we'll allow anybody from the public that wants to be on the agenda, that's not posted. If anybody wants, let us know. Thank you. The consent items, we have 17. Does anybody want to separate one or any of them out, or otherwise I'll put them together for one vote?
I'd like to move out item three for discussion.
Okay.
And also item 10.
Item three?
Yes, three and 10.
Okay, three and 10. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll keep number three and 10 separate. Number one, and two, and four, five, six, and seven will be the similar, the same, establishing a public hearing for sale of alcoholic beverages for special event. And they're the same, I believe, except for the dates. For Brittany, right, same thing, only we'll leave number three out. And number one is July 6th, number two is July 13th, number four is July 27th, and number five is August 3rd, number six is August 10th, and number seven is August 17th. Number eight, possible quorum event, May 30th, Riverside Park, starting at 4:30. No official, no official action. And that's, I believe, is the playground, Todd, for the ribbon cutting. Okay. Number nine, budget workshop meeting date, June 19th and the 20th backup. Number 11, the assessment role of not just vegetation and abatement to set public hearing. Memorandum 17-109 and Resolution 17-17. Number 12 is establish a public hearing for alcoholic beverages special event for July 11th from the Chamber of Commerce, NFAA. Number 13, establish June 12th, a public hearing for sale of alcoholic beverages for a special event for the Chamber of Commerce again, the Yankton Quanis Ice Arena, June 20th. Number 14, special events dance license memorandum 17-115, for July 3rd. 15, fireworks request by Ribfest memorandum 17-101. Number 16, fireworks requests by Third on Third memorandum 17-107. And 17, establish public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages special event, June 12th, for one day from onward, intersection of Third to Second Street. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the consent items, less the two that we took out.
Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion on those items?
I got a question, the third on Third. Do we, what's, is that just a big street dance, or what's going on for that?
Molly, do you want to describe the event a little bit? We're getting lots of questions.
Yes, and I actually have copies of, I got here a little late today, but I have copies, not enough. But basically, this is like a mock-up drawing, and Brittany McFroy and I have, yeah, have walked through this already, but this will be the intersection of Third and Walmart. And what we're requesting is that, well, basically what Third on Third is going to be is a street dance. We'll have food vendors and a small fireworks show, a DJ versus a band, and then it will only go from 7:00 to 11:00. And then we'll also have our, like, different games and activities as well, like, for example, there'll be just like different games and amenities that people can participate in, but it's basically up 18 and older and a street dance, essentially, so.
So are you, as far as alcohol, are you contracting with someone to be in the space selling it?
So it will be a group of volunteers, okay, but both Budweiser, as well as Coors or Dakota Beverage, we're working with them to get different color wristbands, it'll establish people that are 21 and older, and then people that are not of age. We're just selling beer, we're not selling any alcohol or any liquor beverages at all, but it'll just be beer, and then only again from 7:00 until 11 o'clock, so.
And what about security?
Yep, so we have, right now, we need about 15 more volunteers, essentially, but we have contacted a nonprofit that specializes in events like this, where they will, they will come in and act as security, essentially. But right now, we have about 15 volunteers, we're looking for about 35, we slated for the entire event. So we think we can get to that number. That will, they'll basically manage the entrances to the, to the event, and then they'll also manage basically the beer bar, and it'll be kind of like Riverboat Day style, where it's just canned beer and tokens and whatnot. And again, working with those two distributors to, to help be in compliant and all that good stuff, so.
Any more questions?
Make sure you're in communication with the City Finance Office regarding special events, licenses, and things of that nature.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from anyone regarding the consent items I read? If not, we have, it's been motioned and seconded. All in favor of the consent items, except for three and 10, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I'll go back to number three on the consent items, establishing a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverage special event on July 20th, same thing as from Brittany, on the west side of Meridian Bridge.
Move the memorandum, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'm curious to get feedback from city staff on any communication that they've had with a private citizen who's interested in making this an alcohol-free event.
So I have spoke with that person. I had applied for these prior to having that conversation. We've talked, we haven't confirmed anything yet, so I would like to still get this, just in case that doesn't go through. We have been in contact, but nothing has been officially confirmed.
Any dollar amounts in regards to what might be available for funds towards bouncy houses?
So because that night is, so the individual that wants to do this would like it to be, doesn't care actually if we have alcohol, but alcohol, he would, they would want it in a designated spot, so if you were drinking, you would have to stay in kind of like a tent area. But because that is Omaha Street percussion night, and there is going to be a kids camp earlier that day, and then they will be performing, he said that they are okay with not having bouncy houses, since there's already going to be like kids activities happening. We're still kind of discussing what that dollar amount looks like. We are going to be asking for sponsorships for Music at the Meridian, just to cover the bands, and since we're not, might not be selling alcohol at that one, we would have no way to, you know, help cover our cost at all. So we're looking at for sure 750, possibly 1,000. Not sure exactly yet.
I'm sorry, Ted, jump in with a question, but is the individual aware that we do allow consumption in our parks all the time?
I had not pointed out to him, but I will call and let them know.
Make a difference in there.
Yep, I failed to mention that to him, so I will give them a call. We have a meeting a little bit later this week, and so I have to send some things over so he can look at the sponsorship packet, but I will make it a point to let them know that at any point, you know, they can bring alcohol in from themselves.
Excuse me, in effect, sounds like you're asking you want to have the authority to sell alcoholic beverages, but you just may not, depending on what happens.
Correct, yep.
Any more questions?
Last year, the costs associated with the Music at the Meridian event totally, what portion of those costs were recouped as part of alcohol sales?
Not very much. Maybe 20%.
Of 10,000? Yeah, the costs associated with the...
Yeah, and then plus 500 for the homeless shelter. We got about 20% back, so not a big, not a big return.
About 2,000 then? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? From the audience? We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 10 under consent items, transient.
Move the consent.
Any discussion on number 10?
So this is memorandum 17-110 recommending approval of the applications from the Rock and Ribfest for transient merchant license, special events dance license. Curious to know if one of the organizers would care to update us on where they're at, and I do have questions specifically for an organizer of interest.
Good evening, Kristy Wieland with Rock and Ribfest. We're going really well on, everything is going really well on the planning, and of course, we've had some concern with the traffic and the road construction and things like that, but other than that, I think everything's moving along really great. Do you have specific things you want to know about?
I'm really excited that Hairball's going to be coming to town.
Good.
One of my favorites, and I look forward to being there on the second night especially. My question is, just searching the South Dakota business database, your entity is still in delinquent status, and if that's something that has been talked about internally within your board about resolving that, I could just say that as a Commissioner, having previously seen this Commission approve $10,000 funding towards your entity, I think it'd be awesome to have that resolved ASAP before the event.
It is resolved, it's all been paid, I don't know why it isn't off there. So I will call right away tomorrow, I thought it was taken care of. So I will call.
And I'm just, I'm using the South Dakota State resource online.
I'll call Laura tomorrow.
Because my understanding is that your entity is still the same entity as has been in place for the past couple of years, okay?
Yes, yep. Yeah, that has totally been taken care of, so I don't know why it's not off of there, but I will take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Any more questions? Anybody from the audience? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to old business, number one, a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages special event, memorandum 17-102. What's your pleasure? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Although, or roll call, please.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdy.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Canagh.
Aye.
Mybal.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffman.
Aye. Number two, number two on under old business, public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages special event memorandum 17-103. What would you?
I will move memorandum, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on number two in the old business? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Ferdy.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Canagh. Mybal.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffman.
Aye. Motion carried. Number three under old business, a public hearing for the renewal of malt beverage licenses, memorandum 17-104. What's your pleasure?
So, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on memorandum 17-104? Any discussion, anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Canagh.
Aye.
Mybal.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number four, public hearing for a new retail malt beverage license memorandum 17-105. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Memorandum 17-105, anybody from the audience? If none, roll call please.
Knopf.
Aye.
Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. We'll move on to new business. Number one, agreement between the state of South Dakota and the city of Yankton, Meridian pedestrian bridge inspection, 17-100 and resolution 17-16. Move the memorandum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved and seconded, any discussion?
These funds are coming out of the bridge fund, the 30,000?
Yes.
Is this something that looks like it'll be about every five years we're gonna be doing?
We're required to do underwater inspection every five years, and so this particular opportunity came up where the state is doing a number of underwater bridge inspections, and we can do it far less expensive jointly with the state than we can do it on our own. So Adam is recommending that we jump onto their contract and have our underwater inspection taken care of.
Any other discussion, any questions? Public? Roll call please.
Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number two under new business, mayor's appointment to city advisory boards and commission. And I'll just make a note that if during the year, please contact me if you have any regrets or anything, and we can sure move it around a little, so just tell me if during the year if everything is going all right. We will accommodate.
And Mayor, let's also add your name as the seat on the United Way Board of Directors.
I will move the mayor appointment, second, the United Way.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Myvow.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Item number three under new business, Summit Activity Center Rental Rate Increase Memorandum 17-113.
Move the memorandum, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any questions from the audience? Roll call please.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number four under new business, Bit Award for 21st Street Reconstruction Project, memorandum 17-117. What's your pleasure?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, any questions?
Will they do this one side each, or is this gonna shut the street down?
Let Adam answer the questions on the specifics of the project.
This project will be a full street closure. It'll be in conjunction with the railroad crossing replacement as well.
And that's, what, how long a stretch of road is that, that's pretty short, isn't it?
It's from Summit to the railroad tracks, so it's.
Like half a block.
A block, maybe.
And are they gonna put sidewalks on both sides, replace the one in the south, I'm assuming?
Just the one on the south.
Just the one on the south, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call please.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried, thanks Adam. Number five, North Panina Dust Inhibitor Cost Sharing Memorandum 17-112.
Move the memorandum, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Do we see, I know it's hard to tell other areas in the community, but could this happen again in another area that we're aware of? Cost sharing on a road that's really not in the city?
The difference here is, it would be cost, it's a proposal to cost share on one activity on a road that's not in the city, that's directly adjacent to property that we hold fee title to. So there aren't a lot of properties that the city actually holds title to as opposed to, you know, other right-of-way related issues that would be in the city. So, you know, maybe a little bit on Ferdig, there could be some consideration, but that road's already asphalt, it's paved. That's why when we, when we did this, we were proposing it as a one-time only, or on a, you know, on a one-term only at this point in time, and consider it on a case-by-case basis. But I can't really see a lot of, of areas that could end up in the same situation.
So, you know, it looks like a long stretch of that is there are no inhabitants along it, so why do they feel there's a need to do the whole stretch? Does the dust travel that far into their homes, or?
So I imagine that would be the case. I know there's members from that neighborhood committee in the audience if they would wanna expand on that description a little bit, but that's essentially from the end of the pavement to the intersection where the traffic disperses in three directions. So it's the busiest part of the gravel road would be our interpretation of what's being described.
I would assume if they'd limit it, we'd still, our stretch of the road is always gonna be mainly covered in there because aren't there residences across the road from the airport?
So there are, that's, I think what Commissioner Johnson might have been alluding to is the, the property that's directly across from the, the airport property the city holds is mostly ag ground.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so it's that north side that's, okay.
You know, with southerly prevailing winds in the, in the summer, I, I could understand how anything within a quarter mile to the south that kicks up dust is gonna drift north through that area.
Any, oh, go ahead. One question, question I got is like specifically in the city, certain amount of, certain amount of residents want to pave, St. Alleyway for instance, a certain percentage of them, apply petition, and they can get it paved whether they're in 100% agreement or not. Does this work the same way in the county? What I'm, what would concern me is five years, 10 years down the road, there's enough development out there that the organization or the, or the committee decides, you know, maybe we wanna blacktop this thing. We don't own enough to, I mean, is that something that we're gonna be responsible for without, without a say by doing this now?
So we talked about that at the staff level also, and I guess I would, I would look at the other side of that scenario, and, and if the property to the east of that has development pressures to that extent, and it's directly adjacent to the corporate limits, they're gonna be subject to our subdivision and development standards. And I would think that'd be a good thing for the community then. We'd be, we'd be a developing, growing community at that point, and we would, we would wanna be a participant in, in right-of-way upgrades to meet urban section standards at that point.
Any more questions?
Yeah, and then on the east side, they're contributing their share, so basically everyone has got skin in the game here.
So the neighborhood is contributing, is coming up with the share for everything but what represents a front footage for the community. I don't believe that the ag owners across the street are contributing. I believe the neighbors to the north are picking up that portion.
But it is being picked up, so it's not.
Correct. Yeah, the proposal for the city's involvement is on a front-foot basis that's, represents what our exposure is to the, to the right-of-way corridor.
Just a comment, I just wanted to call out a paragraph that you have in this memorandum, Dave. "In working with other governmental entities and private landowners, the city promotes processes where adjoining landowners pay their proportional share for road-related issues even if they are across jurisdictional boundaries." And finally, in that respect, it may be reasonable for the city participate because it is adjacent to property that the city holds title to. I just wanted to call out that paragraph because I think that is even higher level. I think that's really important, and I think it's great that you brought this to us, and, and this is one way that not only is it reasonable for us to participate in this, it does seem to me that this is a fair thing for us to participate in as well.
Questions from the audience, or comments? Go up to the microphone and please state your name. I'm sure there's thousands of people watching right now.
My name is Russ Leonard, I live at 3811 Panina, which is on the gravel part of the road. We did a travel, a traffic count here in March, and we have a traffic count on that road of 187 cars per day. And so you can imagine the dust that this generates, it's tremendous. I am surprised that this, some of the pilots, and I know Mayor Hoffner's a pilot, but I mean the dust that kicks up for the planes even coming in. If we should get an easterly wind, that is definitely gonna go directly on to the, on to the airport. We have pictures where we couldn't even see the neighbor's house across the road because of the dust. It is a hazard, and we, and we have a high traffic count. One thing, I don't know how many members here realize how that property in the city limits go, but there is a council member many years ago by the name of Frank Teeman. I don't know if any of you knew him or not, but he owned the place where Jared Horn lives now. Right past that property is where the blacktop ends. And if you look at the city map, you'll see it's just 90-degree angle, boom, boom, and then all of a sudden, the city limits is on the, on the west side of the road, where all the way from when you turn onto Panina, off of where 31st Street goes up. And I've got maps, I didn't run copies, but you can see it's just a boom, boom. And, you know, they say that, and he was on the city council at one time. And, and eventually, we would like to see, you know, the city limits possibly move to where we share the same benefits as the people in the township that are on the blacktop, and we're not asking you to blacktop it, but we do appreciate you taking some, some interest in it, in, in providing the mag water. We've had a township board that has been more than less cooperative, and we now have a new member on the board, and it's a three-member board. And so hopefully, things will get done, and we're looking at possibly initiating policies where it's on a prorated basis. In other words, if the traffic count is 150 and above, the township will mag water. If it's under, then they'll do it in a prorational basis such as 70/30, or 40/50, or whatever. So we are looking to the future, but it, it's been, I've lived out there 10 years, and this is the first time that we've actually, nobody's ever approached the city before on it. And we're, we're really tickled that you people are taking an interest in it. And the new commissioner right there is Frank, and I don't know, Frank, do you wanna say something?
Yes, Frank Zavodil, and recently appointed to the supervisor position of the Mission Hill Township. And I think I'm bringing in new blood into that supervisory relationship to, to be more serving to the people that they represent than it, and I think. So I'm being challenged to some point, but I think we're making movement in the right direction. But once again, trying to, to deal with some of these health issues, safety issues, I think are real prevalent that we wanna address, especially with the large concern that the constituents have in North Panina that live out in that neighborhood. And I think neglecting that would be just, you know, sad to see. So once again, we are very grateful and thankful that, you know, and working with, excuse me, working with us to try to resolve that issue, so thank you.
Thank you Frank.
Again, just, so just a curiosity issue. You guys sprayed the road before, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, we did last year.
Okay, so it's like a once-a-year application, depending on, is it supposed to last? Like a season, I suppose, is what they call it?
One problem that we've had with the previous. One problem we've had with the previous administration is that they, they wouldn't do it, and so we, we ended up having to do it all. And the other thing is, we don't, the administration on the township does not have specs for gravel. They basically go low bid, and so you can imagine the type of gravel we're getting. I was a county commissioner in Hutchinson County for eight years, so I know bids and so forth. And our past township wouldn't even call the city or call the county to see if we could write, piggyback off of them on their bid for mag water or everything. I mean, we were just totally left alone. And so, yeah, hopefully, one thing I would like to, if, if, I only have one copy, and I know he has one, but just to show you what I was talking about, as far as the city limits, this is the city limits, and this is city where the airport is, and you can see right where. Where it definitely cuts right off.
Yeah, I think we have a map enclosed in our package, so.
Oh, do you? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Epstein. Number six, Planning Commission Plat Review Memorandum 17-111 and Resolution 17-18. What is your pleasure?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Epstein.
Myvow.
Epstein.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number seven, Annexation Memorandum 17-116 for Phase Two of Westbrook.
Move the resolution to annex it, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think, I'm on the progressive growth board. As I recall, the, is the option actually done yet? I don't think it makes a difference for this, but I, I think there may be still, as I recall in progressive growth, they were authorized to get that done and, and to try and figure out, because I didn't know if they're gonna take the whole thing, or.
Yeah, I think they had a, was it eight, how many months do you remember, Dave? So many, number of months for the option?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so in any of that, I.
You're right, I just don't remember the timeframe.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that's where it's going, I'm just not sure it's quite there. I don't think it makes a difference for this memorandum because this is just approving the annexation, but maybe just clarification.
Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call please.
Knopf. Myvow.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number eight, under new business, request to apply for a scholarship Memorandum 17-118.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on number eight?
Just a side note, I'm glad that there's a scholarship out there to attend, but I think as a commission, people should, and the city manager should always look for growth in that, so even if the scholarship doesn't come through, I think you should still bring it back to the commission so that you could possibly attend it. Because long run, if you miss this, you might not go next year, you might not go the year after, so I think it's a thing you should always keep on your radar to bring forward again if, even if you don't get the scholarship.
Yeah, we'll add that I've identified another gal to share a room with, so that'll cut the cost down. And I'm hoping to get the scholarship, so if the commission wants me to bring it back, even if I don't, but that, we have cut travel this year just due to our budget situation, so.
Amy, can you elaborate too? You mentioned it here in your memo that you may take a possible detour while you're down at this event?
Well, I'd like to. So, this year, the conference happens to be in San Antonio, Texas, and about four hours from San Antonio, there's a city called McAllen, Texas, which I believe Tanya Olson has talked to you about before. They have, I guess metamorphosized their old Super Walmart into a library. And so I'm highly interested in taking a look at that. I don't know if we get a windfall, or if I can put, you know, Tanya in my carry-on or something. It'd be really nice to see that facility, at, at least since I'm already going to be near in that area, if it works out. I'm sure the city would be happy to give me a tour, but, you know, we'll see what the budget looks like and prices. And that's something I did want to mention to you guys if there was interest.
Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf. Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Number nine, number nine, under new business, Second Street Calmer Discussion memorandum 17-119, and Adam steps up to the mic. He's ready. Anybody have a motion, or anybody want to make a motion or a discussion first? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Any questions for Adam?
I was at a meeting last Thursday where Adam, Dave Mingo, Todd Larson, and other city staff were present to discuss this plan with onward Yankton representatives, the Meridian District, and just some people from the public. And I thought they did a tremendous job in sharing the plans and being open to suggestions. It was a really great experience to see that. But furthermore, everyone that was there thought we had good plans in place. There were some small suggestions that are easily worked in, but I think the people there see this as a template which we can paint on later as things develop. So I think a lot of people are really looking forward to us getting this started and further beautifying the downtown and making it more pedestrian-friendly, connecting to the river.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, the, we're doing, well, we're not touching Walnut at this time. Is that because that's going to be a little more involved design with the, we talked about, speed, what they call those big pedestrian speed bumps or whatever?
Yep. We'll, we'll incorporate that in with the Walnut corridor design.
Okay.
Hopefully, next year.
All right. Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call, please.
Minor.
Aye.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Number 10, under new business, Third on Third Special Events Parking Request.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on number 10?
Yeah, I know, we talked about it a little bit earlier on the alcohol license. Can you kind of hit a little bit about the area, the businesses involved? How have they all, I know we've done these events for Rib Fest when I was down there before we closed off the streets, sold alcohol on the street. How have all the other businesses welcomed this change, or this event?
Yeah. I've talked to most, if not all, of the businesses, including O'Malley's, which will be enclosed within that enclosure, and just the, the, they need to be careful. None of the alcohol can leave that night out of O'Malley's. So that's kind of the number one that I was most concerned about. The other businesses, I had also warned them that I might need a letter from you at some point, just to make sure that the commission knows and other people know that you guys are supporting this event that's happening. And most of those businesses say, well, I'll be on vacation or closed, so we'll be out of town as long as, you know, and I, I think I requested as well, the orange meshed fences, and we want to make sure that the businesses themselves, if, not if, but when they are going to be closed, that pedestrians or people attending the event aren't going to disrupt or try to do anything to those certain businesses. But yes, most of the businesses know at this point. I still have a few to go, but most of the businesses are aware and just have said that we'll probably be closed. So, the only one, or the number one that I'm most worried about is O'Malley's, but Jeff and Marty have both expressed that they'll make sure that no alcohol leaves O'Malley's from, or during that event, so.
Yeah, it's only from 7 to 11.
Only from 7 to 11.
So in our packet, we have a drawing that's a little bit different. Is this, this is final?
That is not final. Now, I handed that out just so people kind of got a general idea of what the layout will be. No, that is not final, but essentially, yes. Yep. Thank you, Brittany, for sending that out, too.
I do want to add that I have walked through, you know, what the event looks like with Molly. She's been talking to me a lot when she had this idea, and we've kind of walked through what, what businesses will be affected and where the snow fence needs to be, where entrances make the most sense, so it's safe for everyone. And, you know, she has talked to the businesses, and we've, it, there really isn't a ton of businesses that are affected that are, would be open on July 3rd or anything like that, at that time.
I will mention that Riverfront or Sina is going to allow us to use her restrooms, and a lot of her corner facility, if you look at the kind of the map of where that is, but she's going to be letting her, letting us use her restrooms during the event and whatever else we need, so.
My question, maybe it's for Ross. What about, speaking of Sina, you know, she's got an outdoor license to be able to go onto the sidewalk with beverages. So how is that different from being able to walk off of the sidewalk from where she's got that onto the street where it's an open container versus, say, O'Malley's who does not have one and can't walk out the front door?
Their license ends at the edge of their licensed establishment area, but if it's, if they're not drinking from a cup, that needs to be returned. I mean, if we're, if we do away with the open container license, that becomes an issue if they don't have an off-sale license, you know what I mean?
But if you're, if you're closing off the street for alcohol consumption, doesn't it, does it, does it just go to the curb, or does it go, go all the way through the sidewalk?
I, I think the idea is you either have to bring your own alcohol in, or you have to buy at the kiosk or whatever, which is specifically licensed for this event. So that's why I'm suggesting that they're very careful that they work with the city finance office and make sure that they're getting properly licensed and just make sure, O'Malley's is the right protocol here.
Right.
Make sure that their drinks aren't leaving their establishment, because that can cause some potential problems.
And we've been working with local insurance agents to make sure that we're compliant there as well. And then, you know, I was just with Sina earlier tonight, and they will not be selling alcohol that night. So it's literally just, I, I have no other reference to, or compare it to, other than Riverboat Day's style, where it's canned beer, 18 and older, you have to have a wristband, and very secured and compliant. But I would also like to know, like, you know, I'm working very closely with Brittany and, and Sue O'Grady. If there's anyone else that I should be talking to as well, just to make sure we do this event right, I would like to know, so.
The only two licensed establishments are O'Malley's and Riverfront Events, right?
Yep, yep, so.
And so, how did the fireworks play into this? Where, are they shot off from the stage area, or where?
No, they're being shot off in the First Dakota parking lot, actually, where the, like where the farmer's market happens on Saturdays. I have been working with the fire chief, as well as Brittany, in making sure that it's a certain class of fireworks. I've learned a lot about fireworks, a certain class of fireworks, and that we have like a certified pyrotechnician to put them off. So we are making sure that we are doing, doing it right. They won't be the amazing fireworks that the city put on, but they'll be things that you and I could go and buy in any establishment and light off, so.
They are Class C, and Larry has signed off on it.
You mentioned the restrooms in the Riverfront Event Center. Normally, there's porta-potties set up in an event like this. Not knowing the number of people and how big of a restroom is in the Riverfronts.
Yeah.
Is that going to be an issue? Because you all have kids?
Yep.
Well, I don't know, 18 and under, I guess.
18 and older.
Older.
Yep.
But, you know, there's, possibly you could have a lot of people there and maybe not a very...
Yeah, I'm hoping we have a lot of people there, and because it's the first year and there's a certain budget, and we're, you know, because there's a small, limited budget, we didn't, I didn't ask for porta-potties, so. If we need to have porta-potties, though, based on the size of bathrooms that the Riverfront has, let me ask you this, is that something that needs to be commission-approved? If we, we do porta-potties, okay, but it is, it is a run, it, there is a fee associated with that. So, yeah, if we see after we're, we have a marketing strat, not strategy, but plan leading up to this event, including partnering up with Lewis and Clark and trying to get some of those campers into town, if we see that we're getting a lot of people to come to these events, we'll make sure that we have the right amount of access to bathrooms, so.
Any other questions?
Molly, why is Third on Third an event that needs to happen downtown?
Right. Well, it's the night before the 4th. When I think of Yankton and, and growing up here, and I always think the 4th of July is the day that I go out to the lake, and then I come into town with my family and watch the fireworks on the 4th of July. The night before is an adult night. I don't know, it's a night to go out, night to be with your friends, a night to enjoy the town, enjoy the businesses that are open, and maybe shop during the day. I don't really know. But it's, it's one of those nights where it's always a very busy night, I think, for the city of Inkton. I don't think I've missed the 4th of July my whole life, really. It's where I come every year. So I think it's important to establish something the night before the 4th, and hopefully, and maybe that this is it, so.
I'd like to add, I do think, I want to, you know, give Molly some props. I think bringing in a DJ is super cool and unique. We always talk about, how can we bring young, younger people downtown? And, you know, for the younger people, the bands might not be where it's at for them. And so for kind of thinking out of the box and bringing a DJ, and I know she's kind of utilized some of her resources up in Minneapolis, so, you know, bringing someone that's affordable for her event, I think is super cool, and I think it's going to be a fun and unique event for Yankton. And for the younger generation, it's not going to be a typical street dance that happens, you know, every other year. So props Molly for kind of thinking out of the box and, you know, maybe catering to that younger age that will be downtown on July 3rd and, you know, continue to move down after the event.
And thank you, Brittany. And, and I, and I will say that I think in every conversation that I've had, it's we have to be very, very, very careful with this event because it is 18 and older. So we'll make sure that we have the right amount of people in place to, where there's no underage consumption or any, any of that nature, so.
Molly, you mentioned marketing. Could you share a little bit with us? Because what we've heard in our Design South Dakota project is a, a lot of the people that you are targeting are not aware of the types of events that go on in Yankton. So could you elaborate a little bit on how you plan to market this, not only to 18-year-olds, but how you appeal to get them and then maybe an adult population down there?
Sure. So, we have, through the CBB and the Chambers, and the Chambers help, as well as onward Yankton and the city of Inkton, we are, we have basically a partnership with Lewis and Clark Lake where we are showcasing all of our events and all of the businesses that are in downtown Inkton. And in this pamphlet that will go to, in a welcome packet for every camper, let's just use Lewis and Clark for, for an example. So they'll get basically a downtown welcome packet, or Meridian District welcome packet, and it'll have this trifold that has every business in it, and then all of the events, including Third on Third, and follow us on Facebook, and all the social media things that would maybe pertain to a younger generation. But then it also has those individual posters in this entire folder. And so that is a welcome packet that will go to each camper, or each person that comes camping out at Lewis and Clark Lake. We're also going to put it at different campgrounds. I know we have a ton of them, some of which I didn't even know about. So we're, we're trying to hit all of those, as well as the hotels, different businesses. And then I'm also working with those three high schoolers. They're going to be basically doing a lot of groundwork where they'll be putting the posters and flyers at places that they hang out, et cetera. We also have a Snapchat filter that will go on that night. So when people do a Snapchat or a selfie, they'll be able to, it'll show Third on Third and the Meridian District, Inkton, South Dakota, so they'll be able to showcase that. There's a lot of different things. Social media, we'll be boosting the post heavily, actually, starting tomorrow, so it should get a far reach. Downtown Sioux Falls has also agreed to put this out there, because I don't think they have a lot going on in Sioux Falls that night. So Vermillion as well. I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, and, but I would say that just reaching as many of those different entities to get a, a large range in terms of demographic is what we'll be doing. So, I don't know if that answered your answer stuff, but...
Any other questions?
Just appreciate your efforts to make the 4th of July weekend more memorable.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Molly. Sounds exciting.
Well, thank you. Thank you all so much for your support, and thank you, Brittany.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mosher.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. The last item on, under new business, the introduction of the, in first reading, a vehicle for higher ordinance.
Introduce.
Okay. All right. If, I'll ask for a German in the executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters under South Dakota Code of by Law 1-25-2. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Not yet, because I just want to make sure that I have everybody out there.